Good evening, everybody. It's glad to see everybody here in July. It's July 18th. It is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. Couple of things I'd like to point out before we get further in. Would recognize we have a quorum. Mayor Pro Tem Dozier is sick. She's not able to be here tonight, but we do have a quorum. Also, I worked with a few council members and we declared it so a no jacket summer. So, we're gonna leave our jackets at home because it doesn't really make sense to wear a jacket when it's all hot in the summertime. So, if you see us up here wondering why we're not wearing our jackets, that's why. Just going with the sensibility factor here. Feel free to take yours off if you're warm. Without further ado, I will recognize Reverend R.J. Hogard. He is here as our guest to do our invocation this evening. R.J. Hogard is a pastor at the Summit Church and they are currently building a building off of Lufkin, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So, welcome to Mr. Hogard and sir, if you would please bring our invocation for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for this day and God, we are grateful and thankful for the grace and mercy that you show to us. And Father, it is in that light that we want to pray and ask for wisdom. I pray for wisdom for this council as they guide and direct this town. Now, we live in such an amazing town and we're so blessed to be citizens of it. And God, we prayed that, or we were reminded in the Book of James, Father, in Scripture, that it says that if anyone lacks wisdom, that you give graciously to all who ask. And so, God, we're praying and we're asking for wisdom tonight. God, I pray also for a spirit of unity here tonight. God, I know that there's a lot of conversations that are gonna be taking place, but God, we ask that you would give us discernment, that you would give us knowledge and that you would give us wisdom beyond our experience and beyond our years. God, we're thankful for our freedoms as a country where we can come together and we can discuss and we can talk and we can work through the issues that face our town and face our region and the surrounding areas. And so, Lord, we are grateful for that and we want to thank you and praise you and give you glory and honor for it. And it's in your powerful name that we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I hope you had a chance to get a copy of the agenda that was out on the podium. Looks like this and it is dated July 18th. You will be able to follow along with us tonight if you have one. If you intend to speak tonight, there is a yellow sheet that you should have also picked up that gives you the guidelines on speaking in the public forum and the public hearings tonight. In addition to reading the guidelines, we ask that you put your name on one of the appropriate yellow sheets of paper here on this ledge so that you can be recognized and come speak. Once you have done that, you will be able to speak at the appropriate time. With that, we now move through the presentations since we have none and we take a look at our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine. We typically enact them with a single motion and vote. However, if any council member sees an item they wish to remove from consent and discuss at a later time, we can do so. So, at this time, I'll ask the council if there is such an item or if there is a motion to approve the consent.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Alright, consent agenda passes unanimously. Now, we're at the bottom of page two where we set the regular meeting agenda. This is where we determine the order of things that we will discuss tonight. With the minor modification to the printed agenda, my request to council is that we hear public hearing number three before we hear public hearing number one. I think there are a few people here who are curious about this item and may have been concerned about the severity of it where it may, in fact, not be very severe and I think we may be able to dispense with that one quickly. So, if there's any other items that would like to be changed, please say so or I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that modification.
So moved.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda with that one modification. Discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Alright, we will hear that. Public hearing number three will come first in the public hearing section. We now move to the public forum period. This is our period once a month where we hear from you, the public. You have an opportunity to address the town council. We listen to you. You have three minutes where you can come up and say something. If you did not sign up, then I will not be able to call your name. But I will now take the sheet from the clerk. Here we go. So, I've got 13 names of people who wish to speak during public forum. So, at this time, I'll ask, as I call your names, please be prepared to start as soon as the previous person finishes and we can move things along briskly. The first three are Chris Shaw, Charles Sandhofer, and Jim Middleton. Chris Shaw, up first? Okay, up here.
The Longwood.
Alright. And while you're coming up, just recognize there is a green light, yellow light, red light system. When you see green, you're good. Yellow, you're running out of time. Red, I'll stop you politely as I can. You have the floor, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Mayor, town council members, I am here representing some landowners that wish to convey their property, part of the friendship station putt. And I wanted to speak on behalf of some of those members who could be here and some that could not be here, but specifically to relay the message that most of my landowners do want to and support this project completely. In fact, a couple of my landowners that are selling will remain as neighbors of this project and they fully support it. As a real estate agent, as well as a real estate appraiser, I think this is a well-planned project. I think it will be of a great benefit to the residents in that area and I urge the town council to consider approving it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Sandhofer? Then Jim Middleton and Stuart Jones.
Good evening. My name's Charles Sandhofer. I live in Orchard Villas condo and I'm here to discuss yard waste, bulk trash. As a condo owner, I am a joint owner of the grass, trees, and clubhouse in the community. The clubhouse is now considered a commercial, to be commercial, is not charged a fee for the yard waste. I don't own the property in front of my residents. It's part of the common ownership as is the clubhouse. Forty residents of the 85 residents do not have street frontage. The residents this year will pay over $8,800 for the expected pickup of less than five or six live Christmas trees left over after Christmas. This is our experience last year. We're only asked to be treated like apartments by the city and be exempt from the monthly charge for yard waste. I would like the council to designate the addresses in the condo as commercial slash apartments and drop the fee for the residents. Until Carolina Belt is extended, no yard waste truck needs to be entered into the condo so there will be no fuel costs or any reason for the truck even to show up. All the residents would be advised of the change and any bulk trash, if we have some Christmas trees, would be handled by the condo with no expense to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandhofer. Mr. Middleton, then Stuart Jones, and then Terry Olive.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Jim Middleton. I serve as land acquisition manager for Habitat of Wake County. Habitat is here to present a little facts about Habitat. I know we've been active over here a few years back and we were able to do 26 homes with the support of the community, really, both in contributions and in volunteering and of course with the town staff worked so well with us to complete that project. Habitat is having very difficult time finding land that it can build on because of the increased values that we're seeing in the county. And so, we have a potential opportunity in Apex that I'd like to discuss with you very As you know, the Habitat owners are looking, we sell to people in the 30% to 60% average mean income level. And we try to structure both our sale and our mortgages, which we retain, so that more than 30% of their income is used for housing. And it's becoming much more difficult these days because wages on lower incomes have just not kept pace in our economy so much. So, tonight, we have, through some efforts of myself and Stuart Jones, the engineer, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with, in this friendship station proposed rezoning, an opportunity to obtain some affordable housing lots. And there would be townhouses, but that's fine because we just finished townhouse projects and we see townhouses as probably 50% of our product in the future just because of land values. So, over the years, Stuart and I have talked about the opportunities that might present themselves with large tracts as they become available and into pudds and whatnot to try to include some affordable housing sites in there. And in this particular case, in Friendship Station, we've worked with the developer who has agreed to provide a section within that whole total pudd that Habitat would be available, would have the opportunity to purchase a lot and build a Habitat house. So, by doing this beforehand, it just creates a much better situation for all the citizens. You're not fighting an infill by the loan rezonings. We've recently had a very contentious one in Cary. Some of you may have read something about. So, by doing it in the beginning, we can avoid those kinds of things. So, we look forward and we would urge you to support that project from the Habitat standpoint if you could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Middleton. Stuart Jones, then Terry Olive, then Linda Brown.
Stuart Jones, Jones and Knossen Engineering, just a few things on the Friendship Station pudd I wanted to go over. We've made a few changes since we were up here last time. One is we've revised some of the phasing so that Section 1, which was the mixed-use section, is now our Phase 2. We've also added a notation on Section 1 that it could house up to 220,000 square feet of office.
Is that a minimum?
That's kind of a maximum. It's kind of a land issue.
Is there a minimum?
No.
I'm sorry. This is public. I know it is. Okay. But I'm not a proper person.
We also made a change to Section 6 where we changed the minimum lot size from 5,000 to 6,000 square feet and we changed the average lot size from 7,500 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Another change we made, as Mr. Middleton referred to, we're proposing that in Section 2, that the developer would provide at least two townhome pads and a minimum of eight townhome units to Habitat for Humanity as part of the project. It could grow from there, but that's something to get started with. And I'll stay here later if you have any questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Stuart. Terry Olive, Linda Brown, and then John Butler.
Good evening, Mayor, town council members. I'm Terry Olive at 3113 Olive Farm Road. I'm here on behalf of my mother, Elizabeth Dolles, and I'm here with this evening and my sister Carolyn Thompson. I want to speak to the Friendship Pudd and make it known to the town council that we are fully in favor of this. Our land represents approximately 100 acres of the pudd development and let it known this looks like the best opportunity to develop our land based on the layout of the pudd and the connectivity to other properties. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Olive. Linda Brown, then John Butler, then Shannon Flaherty.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Brown and I'm one of the property owners for the Friendship Station project and I'm here to support that project. This land has been in my family for over 200 years and I know my great-great-grandfather would love to see that development happen, so we are here to support that.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Brown. John Butler, then Shannon Flaherty, and Scott Lofton.
Your Honor, council members. My name is John Butler. I live at 8116 Hume Olive Road. I also own some property at 2816 Richardson Road. I'm here to just go on record to say that I support this project, not just as a land seller, but I am staying. I was able to keep about 3/4 of an acre across the street there and I am moving my house right there. So, we're gonna remain in the area and just want to let you know I do support this fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Shannon Flaherty, then Scott Lofton, and Steve Swamp.
Good evening, council, mayor, town manager. My name is Shannon Flaherty. I'm the executive director with Apex Chamber Commerce and the Town and I'm here this evening to, on behalf of our Board of Directors, to make a public statement in support of the Friendship Station project that is up for further discussion later this evening. And I have a formal statement from our board that I'm gonna read. Whereas Friendship Station is a comprehensive approach to mixed development that includes commercial, retail, varying residential development, and green space; whereas the local developers have engaged and carefully considered input from town officials, local schools, and neighbors in getting to the stage of the process; whereas Friendship Station will develop the required road and utility infrastructure that will benefit the neighboring developments in schools as well as future developments on the western side of Apex; whereas the Chamber is an advocate for the business community promoting economic development through a vibrant engaged membership. Therefore, the Apex Chamber of Commerce encourages our town council to vote in support of the Friendship Station development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flaherty. Scott Lofton, Steve Swamp, then Cynthia Swamp.
I'm speaking for all three.
Alright.
You might not have guessed that.
I see this, I see the squiggle now.
Okay, I'm Steve Swamp and I'm here to speak about West Winds' concern and suggestions for the West Village site plan. Just some quick background, West Winds has never been against any development here. From day one, we have strived to ensure that any surrounding developments become a jewel in the crown of Apex. We want to ensure the safety of all, minimize traffic congestion, and protect the property values and quality of life of West Winds and surrounding neighbors. While we are pointing out our concerns tonight, we're also proposing solutions. Through this process, West Winds has never asked for a handout, however, we do feel that any loss of value to our neighborhood by this project should be offset. West Winds has four main concerns which fall into the areas of protection of West Winds' property and quality of life, safety of neighborhoods, and traffic throughput. The first concern is neighborhood transition. The West Village single-family area borders West Winds, pro zoning, minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet with an average of 8,000 and as part of the zoning, the developer agreed that all single-family lot sizes within 100 feet of West Winds would be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. The intent was to create a transition area so that the larger lots and higher-priced homes in West Winds would better transition to the West Village size and price points. The council agreed there needed to be a transition area between the large lots of West Winds and the West Village development to protect the West Winds homes. Problem is, the developer changed the layout from the zoning to the site plan. Here's a zoning view of the single-family area. This yellow line denotes approximately 100 feet from the West Winds property line. As you can see, there's approximately 13 lots within 100 feet of West Winds. Now, look at the site plan view. The yellow line is still approximately 100 feet from West Winds, however, there's only approximately three lots within 100 feet of West Winds. What changed? Well, the developer moved the road next to the buffer area and the buffers and road total 100 feet wide. So, now that leaves only approximately three lots to meet the 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. In other words, this leaves no transition between West Winds and the West Village homes. While this does meet the terms defined by the zoning, it doesn't meet the spirit or intent of the transition area that was agreed upon. This lack of transition will affect the property valuations in West Winds. So, we can have some possible solutions. Number one is to redraw the area using a zoning view that's probably least favorable to both sides. The developer stated that it is better to look at the front of homes 100 feet away than the back of homes 70 feet away. We don't disagree with that. Another option is to take the 10 lots closest to West Winds, increase them to a minimum of 10,000 square feet to match the 13 total that we had at the zoning. After all, the same house on a larger lot will sell for more money. Or the other option is to compensate West Winds for lost value by making improvements to our neighborhood. If the west, if the home values in West Winds appraised for 10,000 to 15,000 less, which may seem like a lot, but that's less than 1% to 2% of the value of the homes in West Winds, that's $150,000 to $225,000 of lost neighborhood value. A Realtor.com study shows housing mismatches can lose up to 13%, so 1% to 2% is easily realistic. And our suggestion is extend the water line down South Winds Run to offset the loss in the property values. The close proximity to fire hydrants will offset the loss in the property values and will increase our safety.
Hang on one second, Steve. For the clerk, can we give Steve another three-minute period?
That was only three minutes.
That was three.
That was three.
Yes.
But I have three people I'm speaking for, 79.
One per household. You can have six, but we-
Thought I was speaking for the neighborhood.
Uh, where's the rest of the neighborhood? Who's-
Vacation is killing us. We only have 15 houses in the neighborhood.
Do we have four or more people from West Winds?
There we go.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, six more minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Our second concern is the safety at the West Village main entrance on Kelly Road. As you can see, this is the main entrance along Kelly Road here. This main entrance is likely to be a school bus stop. There is also an amenity site adjacent to the main entrance on Kelly Road. As you can see, the peak of Kelly Road right here is gonna create a blind spot in both directions. The distance from the main entrance to the peak on Kelly Road is only about 70 feet. The cars on Kelly Road will not be able to see the children, school buses, or stopped cars, which is gonna cause difficulty stopping in time. Now, if you look at this photo, which was taken from the old US-1 side, you can see the approximate location of where the entrance will be and you can see the peak of the hill here. Okay? This distance again is approximately 70 feet. Now, this is a slide that I didn't have in your package that I sent this weekend. It's the last slide in the pack that I just gave you. Let's talk about the stopping distances. Kelly Road is a 45 mile an hour major thoroughfare. Stopping distance at 40 mile an hour is 118 feet and at 50 mile an hour, it's 175 feet. We have a problem here. So, our request is to re-profile the hill on Kelly Road to eliminate the blind spot and create a clear line of sight to make it safer for school buses and crosswalk traffic as well as those exiting West Winds and West Village. The road's already being rewired, being widened and rebuilt along the stretch, so it shouldn't require much additional work. Our third issue is concern of safety and traffic issues caused by the West Village traffic flow. The construction of West Village is creating two new connections to old US-1. Street A, which is in the commercial area, is a right-in, right-out. Street B, which is in the residential area across from Pleasant Pains Road, is designated as full motion. There's also an amenity site located right next to Street B. This section of the project here is approximately 140 townhomes. So, let me be clear, there is no issue at this time. There's no traffic on this road. However, to see the full impact of this configuration, we need to look at the completed project. As you can see from this, traffic on old US-1 to get to Kelly is forced to go through the neighborhood on Street B. Traffic from Kelly going to old US-1 is gonna go along Street B as well. This traffic pattern is gonna create lots of neighborhood traffic. It's gonna be unsafe for residents and the location of the amenity center means the children are gonna cross the street here. So, it's important to note that the impact of this issue will not manifest fully until the roadway system is completed. We can't approve this configuration based solely on a portion of the total project. The solution is straightforward. Let's reconfigure Streets A and Street B. New configuration is accomplished by making Street A full motion and making Street B right-in, right-out. The old US-1 Kelly traffic will now run through the commercial area where it should and not through the neighborhood. So, keep the traffic off the neighborhood streets and with a lot less potential impact to children who are going to that amenity center. I spoke with Russell Dalton about this configuration. He said the site plan traffic flow is done this way to handle future potential park traffic. Our response to that is there is no park traffic at this time. When the park comes, the DOT will study and reevaluate and make adjustments if necessary. Also, do we really want to enable nearly 1,000 cars possibly coming from that park to go through the neighborhood? Much better to establish the correct traffic flow now and as all of you know, it'll be much harder to get the DOT to change this later. Our final concern is traffic overload. A TIA was conducted for West Village. This is a list of the items that were either left off or not considered by the TIA. You can see the speed limit was wrong on old US-1. Their Apex Friendship High School had no junior, senior class. The TIA was not even conducted for the roundabout system. So, this is quite a list. If we look at the original traffic flow here, you'll see these red lines on several of the roads. These red lines are from the TIA results. Those show those roads are a level surface of E. That's gridlock. And we all know more traffic is coming. So, our suggestion is to reserve right-of-way on Street A for future expansion. West Winds believes that more traffic volume issues would have been exposed had the TIA been conducted with the roundabouts and the other items that were left out and additional lanes would already be required. Don't forget, Kelly is a major thoroughfare. The Kelly Road and Olive Chapel intersection traffic nightmare was fixed with additional turn lanes. If we have no room to grow, there is no way to improve this traffic in the future. And finally, I want to say thank you to all those involved, council, planning, transportation, engineering, in making West Village into something that we'll all be proud of. We are confident that you, the council, will make the right decisions, but remember that if you do nothing and don't take any action, anytime you hear about an accident in our area or, God forbid, a child getting injured, remember you had the opportunity to address the problem before it became a reality. We will all bear this weight if we cannot do all that we can with this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swamp. Willie Walden and then Audra Killingsworth.
Good evening. My name is Willie Walden and I reside at 2800 Richardson Road. I am a neighbor to this new development that we are discussing this evening. As I look around and I reflect, as I walk up on my porch in the morning, I see all around me development, development. So, I'm used to it. I'm accustomed to it. And so, I fully support this development that's coming to my neck of the woods. I enhance it and I welcome it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walden. And Audra Killingsworth.
My name is Audra Killingsworth. I reside at 983 Tender Drive in the villages of Apex. Council members, mayor, and staff, I come before you this evening with a concern in our subdivision that so far has not been addressed or has not been fixed. I live in the villages of Apex and because of where we're located, many people use our streets as shortcuts to get from the Peakway to 64. It has been my understanding that concerns have been brought up in the past about the intersection of Ambergate Station and Wendy Road. The problem with speeding has come up as well as curb parking blocking views of people turning from Wendy Road onto Ambergate. So far, the only thing that has been done is a speed detector has been put up on multiple occasions and a few no-parking areas on side streets that don't see much traffic have been painted. The Parking Committee has come before the town multiple times to discuss solutions and no solutions have been found. On July 12th, a white and blue truck sped around a school bus that had stopped with its lights flashing and stop sign out. I personally have always been hit three different times coming from Wendy turning left onto Ambergate. Every person that I've talked to that has gone through there has almost had a wreck. Everyone that walks on the sidewalks talks about the speeding. My concern is that people, children, are gonna get hurt or killed if we don't do anything. Stop signs apparently were shot down as being more dangerous. No parking designation along certain parts of Ambergate were dismissed without explanation. And an article that I read in New York City talks about calming traffic. Traffic can be calmed and pedestrian safety improved with speed bumps or curb extensions that are physically self-enforcing. Speed bumps have also been turned down as damaging to equipment. Lives are more important than equipment and I am asking to install speed bumps on Ambergate and Wendy and designate certain areas of Ambergate as no-parking curbside to protect members of our community. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Killingsworth. That concludes the public forum list tonight. With that, I'll close the public forum and let me turn to the town manager just for a second on the villages of Apex. If you've got some notes there and you'd like to follow up on any of those things at a later time, either we can or we can follow up with Ms. Killingsworth. Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, with that, we now move into the time of public hearing. As a reminder, we are going to hear public hearing number three first. This is a public hearing to consider the, a possible motion for closing a section of the right-of-way that is remnant adjacent to- that is remnant adjacent to North Salem Street, near the intersection of North Salem and US sixty-four, and consider an order to close the right-of-way. Presenting today is our Assistant Town Manager, Sean Purvis.
Mayor Olive, members of town council, the motion before you is a possible order to close the right-of-way. The right-of-way is located at North Salem and US sixty-four. The applicant, on behalf of Crossroads Properties, submitted the necessary request and fees. DOT, it's actually DOT right-of-way. They are looking to abandon it. This is for our concurrence as we go through the closing, also to make sure that we retain possible easements, which we do require an easement for a force main in the area. Staff has reviewed it. Everything is in order to close the right-of-way, or per your discretion. The, what you have on before you is the full property owned by Crossroads. The red circle encompasses that right-of-way portion that's there. You can see it's just a little bubble basically off of Salem. It was originally there to provide access to a smaller property there that is now part of the larger parcel and is no longer needed for that access point. Stand by answering any questions you may have.
All right. And just to be clear, we are here being asked to provide concurrence for the DOT, and because that piece of property is in our ETJ, so that's part of why it's our concurrence is required, as well as the DOT's, right?
Uh, yes. I mean, DOT, um, yeah, to make sure, so for the closing process, we actually have to do the closing.
Okay.
And that helps us make sure we get our easement.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions for Sean from council before we go to public hearing?
I have, I have one. With the already-approved rezoning here, what is the buffer along that road there?
Now, that I can, I cannot remember.
I haven't answered that buffer. Planning staff may-
I think it's along Salem?
North Salem.
Yeah, the North Salem street.
I believe it's thirty-foot B, but-
The standard in the UDO-
Standard in the UDO is a thirty-foot B, but there may be zoning conditions on that particular property. I'm not familiar with it to tell you what it was on the zoning condition, but the typical buffer is a thirty-foot B.
Originally, I was at that meeting. I happened to be at that one. I think, I thought it was a thirty-foot E buffer, but we converted it over to a B buffer at that time.
I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. It's standard is thirty-foot E. And I, I think it is a thirty-foot B, but I don't have the zoning conditions in front of me.
I, I can say I'm pretty certain it is too. Matter of fact, I'm real certain.
All right.
It's a, it's a B buffer along there.
All right. Any, this is a road right-of-way closing, so any questions related to road right-of-way closing for Sean?
If, if the Department of Transportation kept it and allowed the town to plant it instead, as an additional buffer right in that area, because it's right off of the freeway. This is the entryway to our town.
Are you asking Sean?
I'm asking, I guess I'm asking, has the Department of Transportation-
Or has any conversation been had about us keeping it?
Us keeping it or transferring it to the town instead.
We have not, and we're responding to requests from a citizen. So, and it's technically both North Salem and US sixty-four DOT roads. So the abandonment that comes from DOT, we're just following a simple request from the citizen. That process brings it before you to make the decision for that final closure.
Okay. All right. Let me open the public hearing then. Thank you, Sean. So with, with this, I'll open the public hearing referring to the sign-in sheet. I have two names here. Peter Knossen. There you go. Sorry. I was reading your print. Where'd you go? And Moss Withers. Peter?
Oh, maybe I signed up for the wrong one. I'm speaking on Trackside South.
Number three. Oh, I'm sorry. I got the wrong sheet. Right, because we changed the order. Thank you.
May I just call Peter, so you can just put him up?
Yeah, no, no. I just pulled the wrong sheet because we changed the order of the agenda, so that was my fault. Public hearing number three, hey, no names. So, blank piece of paper. Did anybody mean to speak on this one? All right. I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council, and ask if there's any discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the abandonment, or the closing of the right-of-way. Any further discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
So we have a two-two. Let me just make sure. All in favor? One, two. All opposed? No. All right. Well, in the case of a tie, the mayor votes, and I will vote in favor of closing this right-of-way. We go to public hearing number one now. This is a public hearing and a possible motion to adopt an ordinance on the question of annexation for the Madrich property containing approximately two acres along Olive Chapel Road. This is annexation number six oh seven, and Diane Ken, the planning director, is presenting tonight.
All right. Oops. All right, you see the site. This is Olive Chapel Road with Apex Peakway down on this east side, and the property is requesting annexation in order to get public water and sewer. There is an existing home in this location, and they now have access to public water and sewer and would like to be annexed so that they can tie on. Staff does recommend approval.
Great. Any questions for Diane? All right. Thank you, Diane. With that, I will open the public hearing, and I will make sure I have public hearing number one sheet, Peter Knossen and Moss Withers. You, you want number two? So you really did sign up on the wrong one? All right. Very good. Moss, are you, where's Mr. Withers? You're following him? Okay. All right. I'm going to staple these together later. All right. Very good. So we have no one here to speak on this annexation, so I will pause just for a minute just to make really sure. Okay. All right. I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council for a motion or discussion. All right. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. That passes unanimously. And we now move to public hearing number two. Pretty sure. All right. Public hearing number two is the rezoning seventeen CZ eleven villages of Apex South, PUD amendment, and presenting tonight Liz Lofton.
Good evening. This is rezoning case seventeen CZ eleven. This rezoning is for the PUD amendment to the Trackside Development now known as villages of Apex. The three properties are generally bound by the Apex Peakway, Laura Duncan Road, and Hunter Street. The property is currently zoned, planned unit development conditional zoning. The twenty-thirty lane use map classifies the property as subject to the rezoning as mixed-use, medium-density residential, high-density residential, office employment, and commercial services. The proposed PUD amendment is consistent with this classification. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on April twenty-seventh and May seventeenth. A copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. The applicant is proposing to amend the previously-approved PUD with two of the following changes. The first change would be to amend the permitted uses. The PUD plan shows the uses for the remaining three vacant tracks in Trackside South as streetfront mixed-use, mixed-use retail, office, and attached residential, retail, and office. The owner requested the uses for the remaining three vacant tracks be as follows. Mixed-use retail, office, public, and civic, attached retail, attached residential. All residential will be on the second story or higher over retail, office, and public civic. The PUD plan currently has set minimum and maximum for commercial density on the remaining three parcels. The total overall minimum and maximum square footage for commercial density is not proposed to change. The applicant is proposing to change or combine the office, public, and civic retail into one category and set the minimum amount to seventy-two thousand square feet, and the minimum amount of retail to eight thousand square feet. The maximum amount of office, public, and civic retail would be two thousand and twelve, two hundred and twelve thousand square feet. When reading the proposed chart, you do not add the bottom maximum. You would look at the proposal diagonally. Since the three parcels will develop as mixed-use, you must add the square footage diagonally. The maximum of two hundred and twenty thousand is not changing. Seventy-two thousand and one hundred and forty-eight thousand would equal two hundred and twenty, and eight thousand and two hundred and twelve would equal two hundred and twenty thousand. Planning staff can recommend approval with the conditions as proposed, because this proposed rezoning is in keeping with the twenty-thirty lane use map for this area, which calls for makes of uses including medium and high-density residential, office employment, and commercial services. This rezoning would also provide the developer with flexibility in marketing the properties for non-residential development while still ensuring a set amount of retail is provided. The planning board did hear this item at their July tenth meeting and unanimously recommended approval. I'm here to answer any questions, and I know the applicant also has a presentation.
All right. Any questions of Liz?
In a nutshell, they're looking for more flexibility. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes. And staff also wanted to make sure that a set amount of retail was established.
What are public and civic uses?
Um, there's-
School?
School.
Um, I can read them to you. And so not all these uses are in their rezoning, though, is the only thing. Do you have that in the file? That might be better. But there are things like schools, churches, daycares, government service, those types of things.
Okay.
And they'll have that in their- I think actually it's, I just looked at theirs. Is it still all, it's all uses except for like wastewater treatment plant? I think was what was listed. So actually, it, so it actually is all of these, so I can read the whole list. And, and this was done at a time when people would say everything except. And since then, we make them exclude, we make them list specifically what's included, so don't get upset at a couple of these. Airplane landing strip, airport, ambulatory healthcare facility with emergency department, assembly hall nonprofit, assembly hall for-profit, cemetery, church or place of worship, daycare facility, drop-in or short-term daycare, government service, heliport or helipad, hospital, school, public or private, transportation facility, veterinary clinic or hospital, and vocational school.
So if they came with a landing strip, that probably wouldn't get through staff recommend?
Well, they're not going to meet the requirements for, for that.
You never know. You never know.
They don't have them.
Any other questions for staff before we go to the public hearing? All right. With that, I'll go to the, before I go to the public hearing, I'll open public hearing, but invite the applicant to speak first. And just so that, for distinction, the applicant has nine minutes to present their, their side. Mr. Knossen?
Mr. Mayor?
How are you?
Just the right one?
This is the right one. Peter Knossen, Jones Knossen Engineering. Also, will be speaking as well is Moss Withers with NAI Carolanic, Parks Hunter with Rainbow Station, who is a prospective buyer for one of the parcels, vacant parcels, specifically the large parcel off the Apex Peakway, as well as Eric Rifkin, who's a member of Haley Companies, the owner and developer. Appreciate Liz and her, her presentation. I just want to add a couple of things. We do have a minimum retail component of eight thousand square foot in the PUD. That is in there. We had our neighborhood meeting. One of the primary concerns was not having any retail, potential for no retail within the PUD itself. Staff concurred with that, so we did, are offering that as a minimum component within the PUD as a requirement for eight thousand square foot. Also, want to just mention that there are existing office buildings within the PUD, which totaled roughly over twenty thousand square foot. So, like I said, those are, those are existing in the PUD. So I'll turn it over to, to Moss to talk about some property issues.
All right.
Good evening, staff, council, and mayor. Thank you for your time. My name is Moss Withers. I work for a company named NAI Carolanic Realty. We've been around locally owned for over forty-five years. I've been working with them for about ten years. During that process, I have been working with the Haley Companies on the disposition of their commercial parcels since two thousand and eight, and we have been eagerly and strategically trying to find the right users for the commercial parcels through this PUD. As you can see, we've been very selective, and also we've been very strategic in how we, we assemble this. When this was put together, originally I wasn't involved, but I can assume that the sixty thousand square foot retail requirement was to put a major shopping center. When you look at a shopping center like Harris Teeter with what they call shadow retail next to it, that is, that is usually around fifty or sixty thousand square feet. So we have two major restrictions here on what we have at this parcel. One is, is we've, we've been under contract over the past five years with two retailers to try to proceed, and we've run into two major issues. One is layout. We cannot actually fit the box size that these major retailers need to get into this, this community. We can't park it. It can't set up right. But number two, and more importantly, is we are competing against roads like Highway fifty-five. We're competing against roads, Highway sixty-four and US One. And the most importantly, when you're looking, talking to a retailer, they're asking two things. The demographics have one, three, and five miles, population, their, what their household incomes are, but most importantly, traffic counts in front, and they're looking for over thirty thousand cars. Where we are right now on these two roads, they total, each one is around eleven thousand. And when you're looking and competing against places like on sixty-four where Costco is, and they're in the thirty-eight thousand car range, it's impossible to be able to pull and draw the major retail into our community. Over the past couple of years, we've had a lot of interest from public service and office. But the problem is, is we can't, with how we are, with our hands are tied, we can't proceed on some of these commercial parcels with office, because we would have to still commit to the sixty thousand square feet which we cannot fit. So the hope is, is that we're basically loosening up the ability to do some office. I do still think that a retail component is important for the amenities for the, for the neighbors, coffee shop, sandwich shop, but we do need to be able to allow some of these major office users that really want to be close to y'all, to close to the town, close to downtown, to be able to set up their business and have their business within an area that they can walk to. So, thank you. If you've got any questions, don't hesitate to let me know.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Withers.
I do have a question to ask.
Um, uh, maybe, yeah, yeah, we got a little time now before we bring up public. Yeah, go ahead.
Just quickly, so where do you envision the retail going now? Because retail was a component of this, so people don't have to leave the site to do the-
Sure. So we still see retail being a first-floor option for many of the office buildings in the park. Yep. So as you see, maybe a two or three or four-story, or three-story building, you probably see a lot of the retail staying on that first floor for easy convenience amenities to the office, but as well as the community. And we are, we are in discussions with, with uses that way now, but of course, we can't hit sixty thousand feet of retail when we're looking at that opportunity.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing now for the general public. Barbara Collins, Eric Rifkin, Parks Hunter. Oh, I'm sorry. One second. Where's Peter? Oh, there you are. Did you want Mr. Rifkin to come up? I just read his name, and I realized I'd heard that name a few minutes earlier, so-
Yeah, Parks Hunter is here.
And Parks Hunter? Okay. All right. All right. Let's finish that presentation. I apologize. Okay. Thank you. I got two sheets working off of. I've got two sheets working off of...
Mayor, Town Council. My name's Parks Hunter. I'm with the Rainbow Station Group, and we are in discussions with Haley to put a first-class, premier childcare facility on that site, on the six-acre site. And we think we bring a tremendous opportunity to this area. From our research, it's underserved childcare-wise. We... Our school is... Actually, it's two schools. We have the preschool, and then we have an after-school component as well, in its own separate building, so it gives it a campus-like effect, and we can service up to three hundred kids daily. And we also have a get well with a full-time nurse on staff. And we also accept kids from the community, even if they don't go there, to go to the get well during the school day if the parents need to go to work. So, that's a service we also provide to the community for sick kids. And we're very excited to move into this area. So, if you have any questions, please ask.
So, you know your business way better than I do, but it's interesting that you guys are looking at this spot with a daycare in that corner and one right down the road. Do you guys see solving a niche by fitting into it?
I mean, the more competition, the better.
Yeah.
We think we... We don't view ourselves as having a peer. I mean, I have a school down in Charlotte. My playground's an acre and a half.
Oh, wow.
Most of these schools' playgrounds are maybe two thousand square feet, and then we have a full-time nurse on staff. So, when I see a Primrose, or I see a Goddard, that's great. That tells me I'm in the right spot.
Yeah.
But, like I said, I don't view... When people ask me, who's my competition, I really don't feel like I have any competition.
I haven't heard of anything like that.
I mean, we're the only one... The only one in North Carolina is in Charlotte that... We're out of Richmond. We've been around for about twenty-five years. But the projects are very big. I mean, this project's looking... We're looking at eight to eight-and-a-half million dollar project.
Oh, wow.
It's not a three to four million dollar small childcare facility.
Just to be clear, I don't want to get too close to the competitive nature of it. We just want to make sure this is appropriate use, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I do have one quick question. If you had that much room, do you teach them how to play baseball?
We have a field. We have a field that we use for soccer and all kinds of other sports.
Okay. Thank you.
Watch that baseball. Watch that.
Because we have to play baseball.
All right. Thank you, Hunter. Mr. Hunter. Mr. Rifkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and staff for all your help through the process and your... Just wanted to also thank the mayor for relaxing the jacket requirement. My sitting on the chair. Just a couple of brief points. First, staff worked with us throughout this process, actually worked to give us the eight thousand square foot number on retail, and that's how we came up with it and agreed to. That's something that changed from the neighborhood meeting. Second, they obviously gave us a recommendation for approval, and we have unanimous approval from the planning board. We already have twenty thousand square feet of office, and this change allows us to get more flexibility on other uses instead of just putting the whole thing into retail for the rest of the development, and we have a great user in Rainbow Station. They, as Council Mayor... Councilman Moore alluded to, there's a lot of interest for daycare facility in the area because they all look at the same demographics, and these demographics cannot be beat in this area apex. So, that's why everyone is kind of looking towards the center for this sort of use. And we look forward to hearing everyone else's concerns and any questions you might have for us.
By putting the retail underneath office, does that help you get the retail in in a better way? It seems like it would.
Just the flexibility gives additional options instead of just saying this is blank retail, and there's no such thing as second-story retail space.
No.
So, that would not work.
No. But we haven't had... You haven't gotten retail in there under the present configuration, so I can understand why you're trying to at least get some retail in. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rifkin. All right. At this time... Oh, did you have something else?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Barbara Collins to come up and speak, and then it looks like the Muciolis. Just as a reminder, one person per household, please. All right. Ms. Collins?
Barbara Collins. My husband and I have lived here twenty-two years, and that area behind our house, we're adjacent, nine oh-one Norwood Lane, and we've been before you before, talking about these requirements and retail, et cetera. So, I have a statement from my neighbors, but I'm not going to read it because I heard some things tonight that I'd rather respond to instead in my three minutes. The first one is, I agree that they cannot fit sixty thousand retail square feet if the only plan for that is to put in an anchor and the stores that go beside it. However, that is not in the world the only option for retail in that spot. I agree that the daycare, as planned, is a great idea for Apex, but it does not need to go in that spot. I also agree with what they said, that there's a lot of interest in that spot because of the location. I also think the traffic counts that they've been talking about probably do not consider the new residents that will be living with us, and I want to mention to you that this is what eight thousand square feet of retail is. It is a single-dollar store. It's four stores the size of GameStop. It's a single Autozone. It's three restaurants the size of Five Guys. It's one Banana Republic, one Tiger Direct, or one DSW to serve the entire community that wants to walk to retail in that spot. Sixty thousand square feet of retail is all of these things. So, our neighborhood has come together and said that we want to continue the restriction on retail and deny any rezoning. I'm going to give the same example I gave last time. I have a car in the parking lot with a hundred thousand miles on it. I would love to sell it to you for a million dollars. Is anybody going to buy it for a million dollars? I think not. So, when they come to us and say the only thing stopping them is configuration and market forces, my belief is that lacks creativity and sound business sense. They can make this work, and yet they do not. I asked the council not only to deny rezoning, but to put a resolution together that says you will never change rezoning for that space, those three parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Looks like this would be Cathy?
Yes.
Mucioli, I presume. All right.
I live at nine eighty-six Two Fly Path over in the villages of Apex. We bought here almost six years ago. We built our house. It was a big dirt lot, most of the neighborhood when we built, and part of the vision that we bought into was across the street, we were going to have retail. We're only a mile from downtown Apex. We love walking into the shops and restaurants, but we were so excited that it was going to be right here next to us. It seems like we've done this over and over, changing the rezon... We relaxed some of the rezoning already. We added... Let them add more townhouses. We had them... There were supposed to be businesses under some of the townhouses. We let them let go of that, but we're tired of this. We really want the retail. If they can't get sixty, eight is not enough. Like, is there another... Like, forty thousand, fifty thousand? Like, we really, really want the retail, and I was not at the planning board because it's at four-thirty in the afternoon, and I work on Capitol Highwood, so I cannot get there. I made it last time. I wasn't able to get it there this time, but I am very passionate about this rezoning, and I wish more of our neighbors were here to say it, but we strongly reject eight thousand as being enough retail in this. And I know last time, when we came before, when this came up with the previous request, the council agreed. They wanted to see more retail there. They saw a vision of, like, coffee shops and gathering places, and that's what we still see. That's what we bought into, and we hope that you agree.
Thank you, Ms. Mucioli. Having reached the end of the list, I will close the public hearing and refer the conversation back to council for discussion, hopefully leading to a motion.
I guess part of my concern is just what Ms. Mucioli just said. We've... The council first approved this whole big project. We kind of allowed higher density because we were also promised retail within the development so that the residents could take advantage out of retail and not have to go off-site. And like she said, slowly but surely, the retail's kind of going by the wayside. We initially had a... We dragged their retail departments over that, and I understand that's not a good... There's not a good market for that arrangement, but we agreed to change it with that plus retail and the whole development. Now, here we're being asked for less retail. I understand, you know, I'm sure there's a market for daycare, but that's not really what the residents of this area need or kind of sold into and what the council was sold into. We plan to have retail there to serve those residents so they weren't going out on Lord Duncan Road and wherever just to go out and get the retail that they need, so I don't like this plan, and I'm going to vote against it.
Any other comments?
I see it as having pluses and minuses. Certainly, the office component is going to increase as a minimum by fifty-two thousand square feet, and I think that's an important component to take a look at now.
I guess, is the daycare center considered office or retail? Public and civic?
Which is in that... Which was it? I'm sorry.
It's public and civic, but the way they've done this chart is that office, public, civic, and retail are all together for those minimum and maximums.
So, that was part of the seventy-two thousand square feet is the...
Yes, it's included in that.
Daycare.
Are you finished?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll come back later.
I do like the office component. I think it gives people a more opportunity to live and work there, and that's part of what I see with villages, they decide to sign out there and live and work. I think daycare, obviously, there's a need for it. Demographics are showing that there's a need for it. They would not be doing it. It'd be silly to put a daycare somewhere where it's not needed. And to me, it feels like that if you have the office there and the daycare, that will fall into having more retail because those office people are going to need somewhere to go to cleaners, or go lunch, or go get a cup of coffee, or whatever they need to do, and the daycare will provide them a place for their kids to stay, and also, the village of Apex, I imagine, there's people that live in the daycare. And the other thing I was looking at besides that was the fact they could maybe walk to work and that hopefully more retail would be... The planning board and staff both recommended it, but I have to usually look at what they say because they're the experts on this, and the staff in particular are going along with this, and I think the form that they did and always go along with some of the changes or requests here, but this time they are, and that speaks volumes to me.
I'd like to go back, if I may, for a second. In terms of the office and public and civic, I guess how many square feet would be the question would be the daycare out of that office? And are we guaranteed of getting a reasonable amount of office out of this? The fact that it's lumped together sets me back for a second because when I first saw this, I thought, that's great. We're pumping up from twenty thousand to seventy-two thousand minimum of office, but maybe we're not.
Can we ask that?
Yeah.
How many square feet will the daycare be?
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three thousand. With what acreage of?
So, we're increasing office then as a minimum of thirty thousand... Twenty-nine thousand square feet, roughly, if I did my math right.
So, office will still be how much altogether?
Office would be... The remaining office as a minimum would be forty-nine thousand square feet versus twenty thousand. So, that makes me feel better.
Let's get a clarification here from Diane. Because this column says office slash public and service slash retail, does that mean that the seventy-two thousand square foot minimum can be allocated in any form across those three?
That's correct.
So, that could be theoretically hundred percent office, or a hundred percent public and civic, or a hundred percent retail, and still meet the minimum?
Yes, that's the way it's written.
So, you could add another daycare or two.
So, the minimum is eight thousand square foot.
Retail.
A retail, but that's the minimum, so you can't have more than that, right?
Yeah, you can have up to a hundred forty-eight thousand.
Okay. Okay. I'm not a math person. I'm social studies. There's no right to...
I would be... Yeah. So, I think it would be wise to at least acknowledge that any variation of those components there could happen with that grouping. Recognizing that there was an assertion that there was twenty thousand square feet of office on the ground currently, that is... Twenty-four, okay. And does that fall into this current table? Is that part of this table? Diane? Is the twenty-four thousand square feet of office that is already on the ground, does that... Is this part of this same table for villages of Apex South?
Yes, it's for the whole project.
Yeah. Okay. So, if it's on the ground, that's guaranteed.
Now, for the current one, does that opposites on the ground apply also?
Yes. The charts are for the whole trackside south development.
It's a big decrease in retail. Just concerns me with the live-work-play in that area was such a drastic decrease. I just don't... I'm fully grasping.
And I guess the point for me, anyway, is we've already reduced the amount of retail in prior agreements, and, you know, we have these... These houses are packed in there. It's very high density, and so it was an arrangement going in. It would be more... Higher density if you give more retail, and now they got theirs, and we're not getting ours.
And I hear what you're saying. I guess the question that I would have is, when we talk retail, what are we talking? What kind of retail are we talking? Are we talking restaurants? Are we talking clothing stores, cleaners?
They're all... Those are all...
I know. They're all lumped in.
Yeah. Those are all valid options for retail.
Yeah.
Services, those kind of services, those are retail.
See, the other part is it's market-driven. Obviously, it hasn't worked. I regret giving up the housing over off... And it wasn't over... It was over office. It wasn't retail, actually, I don't think so much, but it could have. I'm not going to belittle... Argue that point.
Can we ask them, would they be willing to increase that retail amount? The minimum? You know, we like to ask.
We can see if there's any discussion that you've heard tonight that may cause you to want to make an amendment to what you've seen here, if you want to offer a different condition.
Hearing everything we've heard tonight, we would be willing to increase it to twelve thousand square feet.
The retail minimum?
Correct.
It's not close to your house, is it?
Close, a little under, but...
So, I've made a note, the applicant has added a condition to modify the retail minimum to twelve thousand square feet.
What is that? I guess that's three or four restaurants?
Two, maybe.
That's okay. Three restaurants, like Five Guys, was the eight thousand. I like the idea of the flexibility to provide them the opportunity. At the same time, it is a bit of a concern that we're running away from the retail to a degree. At the same time, right across the street, we've got Food Lion that has out parcels that have been sitting there for twenty-five years. Maybe they're asking what you want.
How many townhouses are in villages of Apex? Is there two hundred and twenty or something? Is there 220 or something?
Don't know.
Thought you knew, so...
Don't.
I mean, that could change as more people start filling up over there.
Village is pretty well built out.
Oh, I mean, right across the street.
Oh, right across the street.
Kenny, are y'all getting any kind of inquiries into doing any kind of additions over where Food Lion is? Does anybody come and see y'all, ask any for...
We have a gas station that's interested in going at one of the out parcels that was actually changed in shape and size due to the peakway being realigned when it was built. But that is the only folks that we've talked to recently that seem serious.
I have not met, I'm sorry, I have not met with the developer on this specific instance, so I'm not sure what their thoughts are and what their ideas are. I would personally be okay if we pushed this and allowed us time to, to have conversation and talk about this, just so I can learn more about what, what the thought process is. I'd be okay to push it.
Are you asking to...
Yep.
Continue the vote?
Continue with their...
Thoughts from other council members?
That's, that's, everybody has to, to kind of get more, I always want to have more information.
Okay. Well, if, if the council's thoughts are to continue this discussion until a future meeting, we can choose a meeting, August 1st or August 15th, right? Those are the two. And then we have the special one.
We could do it on special meeting, right?
We could.
And only one item?
We could not.
I would, if the developer is in agreement, I think we should continue it to the next meeting, possible.
Well, the next meeting would be, I think, August 1st?
Yes. And, and I just think that's the right thing to do, especially if they're looking at a daycare situation and things like that.
All right. I think, I think there's some legitimate questions, I think, maybe you want to be asked. So, if, if you guys can, can hang tight for a couple of weeks, we'd like to, I think the mood right now is to continue it until August 1st and use the time in between to have some conversations about what we see or are concerned about as council members. Is there a motion by a council member to continue this until August 1st?
I'll make a motion that we continue it to August 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to August 1st. Did you have a quick comment?
I'm sorry.
A quick comment? For the, well...
Yeah.
For the 15th?
I'm not going to do that.
It's summertime, so there are sometimes conflicts. Yeah. Well, we've had, let me, let me ask this. We've had, we've had the public hearing. I think the time in between, there can be conversations, and I think the only reason we would be coming back would be to make our final vote. I don't know that we'll have questions on August 1st at that point. We shouldn't. We should have all those answered in advance. Would that be all right? I think then we can at least have, have an answer, a definitive answer for you. Is everybody okay with August 1st? That's the motion. And a second? Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of continuing the vote on this item until August the 1st indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, it is continued by unanimous vote to August 1st. And would be good for everyone who has any concerns or questions or whatever to contact Mr. Rifkin. If you could hang around, make sure people have your contact info, that'd be great. And vice versa. All right. Thank you very much for your patience. That concludes public hearing number two, which also concludes all of our public hearings for tonight.